Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand to join us for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thanks for joining us, everyone. So we'll start out. Brian, I guess you want to start us off?
Oh, great. Thank you for taking the time to go over the budget for this year for 2016-17. And leading us through our study today is our chief business official, Maureen Fitzgerald.
Okay, so before you, you have a binder. We're going to go through this binder, some parts more quickly than others, but I'm going to walk you through some things before we like head into it. And I want to do some prefacing into kind of like the basic nuts and bolts of our budget and what it means. So some of this may be repetitive for some of you, but I think it sets a good framework for what we're going to do into this work. And I'm hoping that this is just the beginning of really getting deep and dirty into our budget and making sure that, you know, your priorities are addressed in here and all of the other guidelines and things that we have to comply with are also. So I'm going to start out by talking about the general fund. So government accounting is what we use. We are a government entity. And we basically do fund accounting. And each fund identifies the restriction of what the state defines as keeping money separate in an identified ledger. So the general fund is a fund, cafeteria is a fund, food, you know, the construction projects will have various funds. And that's how the state keeps track. The general fund specifically is the pot of money that is used in our basic operations. And it's identified in two categories, restricted and unrestricted. And we've heard these terms before. Those categories are managed within a resource code defined by the state. And we'll get into that shortly, like next. And the way we run reports is by running that group of resources. So there's not a single identifier that says this is a restricted or that is an unrestricted expense. It is a series of codes that we have to filter through. And I gave you an example down here of what it looks like when we report to the state. And this is as of the September unaudited actuals. And you can see that it breaks down restricted, unrestricted, restricted, and total general fund. And this is an automatic collection of data from our financials, and it groups it by that one sole resource code. So that's important as we move forward because you're going to hear about all of these different categories. I also want to go into some basic budget information. We talk about carpentry being basic aid and what that means. Basic aid is when your property taxes collected exceed what the state formula would give you. So we call it the LCFF, the Local Control Funding Formula. That's a comprehensive calculation and it benches your target amount. And if your property taxes exceed that, you're considered basic aid. We fell into basic aid during the recession. So basic aid has a lot of different hats. You have districts that have always been basic aid. We have some neighbors north. And there are other districts even farther north in the Bay Area that are going to always be basic aid because of the wealth in the community. And those districts we call like very, very rich basic aid districts. Sometimes their per pupil amounts are two and three and 500 times more than what we would normally get from the state. We are not that. We are barely basic aid. We are less than a million dollars above the threshold. Which means that property tax conditions can change, state conditions can change, and we can come in and out depending on which calculation shows a higher amount. So that's really important because when people hear basic aid, they think of some neighbors north who are very, very wealthy basic aids, and that is not us. Property tax projections do come from the county auditor. They come around now when the tax rolls have been mailed out. So that's when we know what our estimated collection will be. Our budget has to be adopted by June 30th, by July 1st. And those are early, early projections, and the auditor is very conservative. Because obviously, property taxes are all contingent on the real estate market, and they are not, not, they're not, not stable, but they are not steady. They can fluctuate greatly. We collect them twice a year, so we are only getting paid cash in December and April, only based on those that paid their property tax bill. So the number we collect can also differ from the number we budget and we are estimating. And the property taxes are all unrestricted dollars. Now, basic aid versus local control funding formula and the LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan. How are they all interconnected? And where do we fall being basic aid in those two things? We still have to calculate the local control funding formula because in that local control funding formula is what we call supplemental and concentration grant calculations that address our unduplicated pupil count, the free and reduced lunch, the foster youth, and the EL learners. Those are all, only count once, and they have a separate and add-on calculation to the formula. So we do have a pretty significant percentage of free and reduced, unduplicated students. It's about 68%. So we do have a calculation of what those grant amounts would be. However, we do not get those dollars. It's in a calculation and identified amount only. But we must, and it's not an option, we must address services that identified that calculation, those students that are in that 68%. We must identify the services to the extent of that calculation. So that's also setting some framework here. Feel free to interject.
So just to clarify, for people, for those that maybe aren't as familiar with this, we don't receive any concentration grant money, correct?
That's correct.
But we still have to show that we are providing those extra services for the, for those populations?
Yes. And it's, it's, so the definition is how are you improving or enhancing services to those students? So it doesn't necessarily mean how are you adding. It's how are you enhancing? So we can kind of get into how that can-
And that, 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 that is different than a, than an LCFF district where they get money per basically average daily attendance-
Yes.
And as well as the concentration grant money.
Yes.
And, and, and that, and that is the reason over the last few years why districts who are now, what was ADA, now is LCFF, have seen their revenues increase so significantly because they're getting all this extra money.
Yes, but if we had not been basic aid, we were, we're doing a calculation with that add-on money, and we're still a little bit above that. So you're, that's correct. And that was a move to address the issues related to serving those targeted populations that are not what every, not, it's not faced in every district. So you have some districts that may only have an 18 or 20%. They'll get nothing. So one of the formula calculations is your amount over 50%, and one is over 20%. And so, you know, it, it's, it's not for every district, but it is to serve those that have a high concentration of those students. So that's true.
I have one more comment to make because you mentioned that now we're a million dollars over into basic aid.
Just under a million.
Just under a million, which is very significant for the community to know because just a couple of years ago, we were four million.
Right.
So the LCFF funding is closing that gap. We don't know how long we'll stay in basic aid, and we might fall back into LCFF. Just, I mean, the numbers are changing significantly.
Well, a lot of it will depend on Proposition 55. And if that, if that passes, then the state will, will continue trying to reach the 2007 funding benchmark, correct?
Right.
And, and, and which will increase probably-
Push us back into.
Yeah, so that, so the funding, the funding will increase more than, or potentially more than what our property tax increases are, so.
Well, it's not necessarily a bad thing. I'm not saying that. It's just that while we've been in a situation here where we have actually been in basic aid and other districts near us have been under LCFF, and they've been receiving huge increases in funding, and we haven't received that because property taxes haven't really increased that much. And so, you know, it, it, it just makes the picture look different. We haven't been able to compete on the same playing field for the last few years.
Yes.
Even though being in basic aid has been a better thing for us.
Yes, and from the inception of the local control funding formula, the, the estimate for, so the calculation, it calculates your target, but then the state only funds a portion to reach the target. And it is, it was anticipated early on with the passage of LCFF that the target would be reached in 2021. Well, that's right around the corner. And they are actually, they have accelerated those jumps because of the state revenues. So they are getting very close to the target, and there's, there's, you know, depending on the state revenues, it will most likely be met possibly even in 1819. Once districts have reached their target, those big jumps they're getting will stop. And then it will revert back to what we used to get, oops, as a cost of living. And at that point, depending on where we are, if the cost of living is a two or a one and a half percent, which it's estimated they'll be between one and a half and no, no more than three moving forward past those years, and our property taxes increases are a little bit higher than that, we will probably just keep our inch above LCFF. But it won't probably exceed LCFF by a lot. So, I mean, it's very possible we could slip back down. It really depends on the state revenues.
Right. And the other difference is when you are under LCFF funding from the state, you actually do have at least a floor that you're guaranteed. When you're in basic aid, you don't really have that.
Well, what's interesting, and I, I know this may be a little tedious for some people, but, so when, when the budget was impacted, I think in 2009 or 10, 10, or 11, we took the fair share cut two years in a row. And, and that amounted to, was about four and a half million total. And, and so we'll never see that money again. That, it's, and other, other LCFF districts, they, they, well, they, they, they got their budgets slashed significantly, but they're slowly getting their budgets rebuilt. So all that, all that, you know, kind of cushion that we had is all, is gone forever. And I think that's just really important for people-
For the community.
For the community to understand.
That's for the community to understand as we're sitting here talking about this.
Right, definitely. Yeah, it's, it's a complicated situation because it's, you know, it'd be a lot easier if we were way above and we didn't have all that to be concerned about.
It sure would be.
That's what we wish for, right? So some important budget considerations that I want to talk about in the unrestricted side of the budget before we get into the data are the set of sides that we are required to identify. And the first is the supplemental and concentration grant amounts I just mentioned. And that calculation is 2.8 million dollars of services we have to identify in our budget to meet our LCAP requirement. The routine restricted maintenance account is required at 3%, comes out of the general fund and goes into a restricted account. But those are all required under ed code. Home-to-school transportation, including special ed transportation, is another just under a half a million dollars. Special ed is required, home-to-school is not. Those are all unrestricted monies. And then our special ed contribution. It's really important to note that, you know, we all know special ed is underfunded. We are a unique district again in that our special ed funding that comes from our SLPA, our special ed local plan area with SBCEO is very small. It's just over $200,000, and the rest comes from our general fund to the tune of 2.4 million dollars. That is significant. And it's significant because in, in ed code, in statute, it requires us to not spend $1 less this year than last year on our special ed programs. Unless you have like a significant drop in students that you can identify needing to lose one teacher, you have to, if you drop it, you have to justify it and explain the exact reasons why those dollars are different. And those waivers are very few and far between. So these are the pot, four pots of money that are kind of like not negotiable for change. I will say that the first pot, supplemental and concentration grants, that's the exercise when we brought our LCAP back to you, that we had to identify within the plan because we had not identified the full 2.8 million dollars. And that's something along with the budget that we're going to be working closely with, with the sites, to really be able to identify what those are so that we are not fishing for those costs. They're very well identified, and they're known, and we can track them. Okay, I wanted to go over to our property tax history because I think this is our most important piece. Thanks to Cindy, we had this great spreadsheet that went back 2012 and 13. This is actuals up into the 1617 year, which is our projected increases. So you can see from 1213 to 1314, it increased 5.6. Then it increased just under five, and then five and a half. You can see there's a lot of fluctuation within a half a point, 0.6 of a point. We're projecting in 1617 to have a 4.2 increase, and these are all in the unsecured role, I mean, in the secured role. And then 1718, 1819, we're at 4%. So you can see that it kind of is, it's not unstable, but you can see that it's slowing. And that's real indicative of the real estate market right now. It's not unstable, it's just steady, not growing as it, as it was. Now, we also know, no, go ahead.
Do we have that in our book? I don't see it.
No, I'm sorry. This is on the slide.
It's in the handout. Thank you. I didn't see that here.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just didn't see we had this. Perfect, thank you.
Now, we know that from projected to estimated, it does go up some. And I would estimate that we have maybe a half a percent fluctuation in any given year between projection and actual, and that's probably the conservative way to go because we just don't know. So I think this is really important information for us to have. Okay, now we're going to get into some good stuff. The book before you is broken into seven parts. The board has a couple of sections in the back that are, we're not going to go over tonight, but they are staffing reports that I think will be helpful in, in reference. But what we want to do tonight, I think, or today, I think, is kind of start talking about how the budget is built and how we track the money. Because I, that's an important piece for us to understand as we're going through some of these documents and kind of some of the work that we're going to be doing in the, in the coming months to bring back a revision at first interim. So you'll see a lot of reports here. Don't get starry-eyed yet. It's not that bad. But there are good information in these reports. So before we hit tab one, I'm going to talk a little bit about our chart of accounts and how we read our account codes. We have this entire string of numbers that tags on to every single expenditure and every single revenue in our books. It's a long string of numbers. All of these in orange, they're not, they're not real clear necessarily on the screen, but all these that go through the object code are required by the state. They're state-defined. The last three groups are locally defined. The school was intended for the state to have like a CDS code identifier. They've never implemented that. So it's there. We just can define it ourselves. I have included in your book under section one, and it's stapled if you want to take it out, a full chart of accounts for our school district. And this chart of accounts goes through every one of these groups of codes and what their purpose is. Now, what this account should do very simply is tell the story across from left to right. Ideally, it's what fund you're living in, where the money is coming from, what student population is being served, regular ed, preschool, special ed, that's pretty much it. The services within that population, instruction, administration, custodial, transportation, what you're paying for, salaries, supplies, services, contracts, the school that's being served. And then these codes here are, these three codes are not all used consistently to identify things simply. So the manager code would normally be who's responsible for that budget. It would be used to identify whether the principal has discretion or whether this is managed by the business office, or whether it's managed, this is transportation's pot. And then the unit code is kind of a quasi-department. But there, we're going to talk about a little bit about how we're going to tighten this up. Right now, these are kind of, this is like chapter 10 in the book. This is like chapter two in the book. You know, they're kind of random, but not together. So we use this for some things, this for some things, this for some things, this for not everything. And so pulling a single report out that really tells our story is a little bit hard right now, but we're going to get there. So that's our chart of accounts. Okay, so now I'm going to have you go to tab two. We're going to start getting into the, the data. In tab two, you'll see, these are all out of the escape system, our new financial system. And we're going to get really familiar with these reports. This is what we call a budget object summary. It's a two-digit object, meaning the fund is here. The object code is here summarized by two digits. So it's basically very basic. So in your book, you'll see all of the revenues start with an 8,000. You'll see revenue and financing sources. Those are going to be our property taxes and any LCFF, any unrestricted dollars, federal, state, and local money. This report is the entire general fund, restricted and unrestricted. It is not segregated. After the revenues, you're going to see our certificated salaries, our classified salaries, employee benefits, books and supplies, and services and operating expenses in different categories by two-digit major object. So it just gives you a summary. That's a really small report that you'll see in, in summarized fashion by major category. And when you get to page two, you'll see a smaller bar about a third down the page, and that basically gives your beginning balance, revenue, expense, and ending balance.
Why doesn't the revenue sources, percentage of the sources add up to 100?
Very good. This percentage of sources is a percent of fund balance, not a percent of the total revenues.
Total revenue, okay.
Right. Right, so when you look at the very, very bottom of the page, where on page two of three, you'll see where it has them in 1,000 summaries. At the end of the 7,000 other outgoing, that total expenditure is 88.51. When you add up the ending balance at 11.49, that makes up your 100%.
Gotcha, okay.
So it's, it's, it's accounting for all of your resources.
Including the, including your, your, your reserve?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and this report doesn't have the, the reserves identified. It just goes into fund balance, yeah. On pay, on tab three is where I think it's most relevant for you to look at. On tab three, you're going to have full object code. So, so your object codes are now breaking down in detail. You're going to see the LCFF state aid, which is the state aid portion of what we get. We, you'll see the, the education protection account, which is through Prop 30, our homeowner's exception, all of our property tax rolls. You'll see special ed entitlements. You'll see other apportionments, 8550. You'll see the mandated cost reimbursement. Those are those one-time dollars from the state. Lottery, other state revenues, leases and rents. It all gives you the detail by object. In like, it gives you all of the detail with our salaries and benefits also. And what I want to show you down in the 1,000s, and again, the chart of accounts can help you with this too, but the descriptions are there. Where you see something that says extra duty, subs in service, sub six, sub other stipends, all of those are non-position-based pay. So where you see regular in the salary title, those are all position-based pay, just for your reference. It gives you the detail of our statutory benefits. You can see that on page two of this report that we pay out 7.1% or 7.1 million dollars in statutory benefits of our salaries. And that's just under 25% of our fund balance, of our entire operating available money. That's a lot.
As benefits, yeah.
Yeah. You can see with books and supplies, it's only 4.8. It's not much at all. And the services and operating expenses, when you consider that your utilities are in here, your property and liability insurances are in here, it's still only about 7.4%. And then on page three, it does the same thing. We're at totals, beginning balance, revenue, expense, and balance, and then it gives you how the percentages are broken down.
Maureen, I just did a really quick calculation. I wanted to see if this sounds right. We spend about $415,000 on extra salary enhancements.
Stipends.
Stipends for just certificated.
That's correct.
Okay, in addition to their regular pay.
When you add it all up, it's just, it's like 489 or 87,000. Some of those are in contract. Some of them are not. So that, that's, that's definitely something that will come up when we start looking at our budget.
Can you give us a couple of examples what they might be?
These are grade level chairs. We're going to get into some of that. You'll see it later. Grade level chairs.
Coaching.
Coaching. Yeah, it's going to be everything that's not position-based pay. But there are a lot of expenses in here with just extra hour time cards. And it may not seem a big deal with an hour or two hours more, or an hour overtime, or two hours overtime, but it does add up quite substantially. Yeah, so that's, that's going to be something that we'll need to dive into a little bit. The next section four is actually a nice report. So this is going to give you beginning balance, revenue expenditure, ending balance for every resource of money we get. So this is going to get into, on page one, you'll see our unrestricted. And everything that you see that begins with a zero is unrestricted money. About oh, three-quarters down the page, you'll see Title I down at 3010. Everything above that 3010 is unrestricted dollars. You'll see how much we're spending in special ed. You'll see our Title II. And on the second page, it gets into all the rest of our categorical money. And remember that several years ago, a lot of these on page one with the zero in front of them were separate pots of money that were categorical, that were rolled into block grants, that disappeared with LCFF. So that's kind of important to know as we go, and I talk a little bit about some of the funding, the ways we allocate funds. I like this report because it just gives us that a snapshot, all of the monies that we get. all of the monies that we get. And let me know if you want to dive deeper into some of these because this is where we're going to start really looking into the budgets in the next section. So in section five, this is where we're going to talk only about unrestricted money. So from here on, we're going to talk about the unrestricted pot and the things we pay for. Now, this is where the chart of accounts gets kind of important to know because I told you it was kind of hard telling the story simply in any one report. So we're going to show you three different versions of a report that give you a look at the things that are spent like at the district office, the things that are spent at school sites, and the things that are identified in unit codes like stipends. So in this report on page one, and it's a thirty-eight-page report, I won't go into everything. I'm going to skip through some of this to get to the different functions. But when something has a function of zero, you can see it's only revenue. Everything required, everything in the state for the state account code structure is required to have a function in it. And the intent of the function is, how much money are you spending on services to either direct instruct students or to support that? And so this is something that we're also going to be looking at to make sure that we're functioning our accounts correctly so that we know all of our costs by category. So when you look on page two, you'll see that the function is just one thousand instruction. This is intended for classroom instruction, hands-on kids instruction, and all the costs related. You'll see that you'll have regular salaries, extra duty salaries. You'll have some substitute stuff in here, and then teacher stipends. Also, you'll have instructional aids. So these are only those services that are serving class, classroom instruction. You'll see the textbooks, this is the math book adoption budget. Um, you will not see in this report the resource, whether it was lottery money. This is all unrestricted, so there's two pots of lottery. This will not include the restricted pot of lottery, but it will include the unrestricted pot of lottery. And then you'll see some minor budgets for travel and conference and dues and memberships and contracts and services. Some of the contracts and services here are those, um, things like the kid biz and all of that that targets classroom instruction and accelerated reader, et cetera. So this is all going to be in this category. On page four.
Can I ask before you go on?
Sure, sure.
Why is there no percentage?
Because this is broken down into a function and it can't pull that out per fund balance, because we don't do fund balance by function. So the percentage is only going to be in our fund reports.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that, thank you for pointing that out.
Mine is there.
Yeah, so the minute I drill into like components, it won't be able to percent out.
Okay.
Yeah, because there, we're only doing a selection of data.
Okay.
So, um, when I pull these with unrestricted, I have to, I have to restrict the resource codes that pull into the report. And for that reason, it won't be able to calculate on the, the fund balance piece.
Okay.
Um, so on page four, you'll see supervision of instruction. The only thing that's in this category right now, this is, is, uh, a twenty-one hundred is our OPUB. That's just an audit criteria. On page five is where you're going to see, um, the instructional supervision, which is curriculum development, instructional development, professional development when it comes to like co- learning comic core, all of the things that are supporting the curriculum being used to educate kids. So there's just some salaries in here and some small budgets. Twenty, on page seven, you have twenty-four twenty, library, media, technology. These are all state-defined codes. And these are keeping track of all of, these are all of those, um, library and media tax that we have at our schools. The lab, I don't, the, that what they're called, yeah, yeah. So this is instructional library media. So this would not be Erin and John. This would be just those pertaining to classroom instruction. The next page is twenty-seven hundred, school administration. These are school offices. Just the school site offices. This isn't like us in the administrative offices, just those that are serving schools. Your principals, your office managers, that's it. And you'll also see the budgets there for the schools. Um, I will also tell you that in this includes the targeted stuff that we talked about also for the supplemental and concentration grant. They're embedded in here. On page ten, you have your guidance and counseling services. Those are your, um, both therapeutic and guidance counselors and any clerical that are identified there with some supply budgets and some service budgets. On page twelve, you have your health services. These are contracts only through SED. Uh, but the general fund has to, is paying this part. Pupil serv- uh, next page pupil transportation. We're on page thirteen of thirty-eight. This is where we're, you're going to see all of our, um, transportation costs, our bus drivers and their, their overtime. So bus drivers, different than probably any other classified, classification are required to record hours above their, like, let's say you have a driver for six and a half hours. They are required to report the hours up to eight and their hours overtime for driver time. So, uh, oftentimes you will find overtime and extra duty and transportation when they're doing trips. And that's kind of the nature of the beast. On page fifteen, you have athletics. So this is where all your coaching stipends live, as well as, as some revenue generated from transportation fees. If I'm going too fast or not fast enough, just kind of give me a nod. Okay. Page seventeen, our civic service budget. And this is, um, mostly abated back from the, the, the facility use requests and the fees that we charge. A lot of that's custodial overtime. And then on page eighteen is where we get into the district office stuff. So anything that starts with a seven is general administration, which includes superintendent, board, finance, um, HR, technology, all of those services. So in this category, you'll see we have a, a budget for the board. And on the page.
To do what?
To do what is a good question.
Make copies?
A lot of the board packet documents are coded here because it's directly serving the board. So you'll see different things here. These, the, this is where we're going to have to start working on what these mean and, and the intent of the board in some of these programs. Because I, I don't have a lot of context for what these are supposed to pay for. Um, and we know that there's a lot of, um, redirecting through a lot of different categories that we might need to make.
So the CSBA membership is, is probably in here?
Yes, your CS, the dues and memberships will be CSBA.
Online agenda?
Uh, uh, that's not a membership. I think that's probably in the fifty-eight hundreds. But some of this is things that were anticipated to take place and maybe have not yet. And there probably needs to be some conversation about the balances in here and, and moving forward.
Well, yeah, because I don't think we're going to go to any of those conferences
Right.
we're scheduled.
Right, right.
I'm a little curious about the, um, fifty-eight twenty for the eight thousand for election.
Yeah. We are required to pay, I, and I think this is for two seats, four thousand dollars to the, um,
To the county.
County, yeah. To the elections office, it's required.
Okay.
Yeah, and you'll see that every election year, election year, you'll see something in there. And then the, you know, there was not any real clear definition in any detail that showed what some of this other stuff was. Um, there are expenses in here, but those are, we're going through the practice and through all of these accounts of what have we spent? Why did we spend it? What was it for? Where should it have gone? Because there's been some coding like all over the place. And aligning it so that then we can start analyzing, okay, that's not going to happen again, kind of thing. The next budget on page nineteen is the bor- the superintendent. And, uh, so here's where you'll see, you know, superintendent and clerical salaries as well as books and supplies and service budgets. Again, there's, there are budgets that are identified here that ha- this, some of these were planned and have not happened. And this is where we're evaluating those amounts.
Yeah, I'm looking at that too.
Yeah, we can, uh, yeah.
We're evaluating that.
That's definitely.
We know that some of these things will not take place.
Yes.
So, um, and, eh, go ahead.
Was this budgeted?
This is all in the budget that you approved. All of this is, this is all basically from the adopted budget with a few tweaks that we did in, in September. So this is all part of the original budget with the exception of a few updates. In December, when you get your first interim, it will most likely look different. Because there's, um, while there's excess budgets in some areas, there are deficient budgets in others.
Yeah. No, there is.
Oh, yeah.
No, we're, we're going to, it's not like this is going to be available money, it's going to have to go somewhere else.
We don't have a lot of availability. It's going to be, we're going to, and that's what I'm going to bring back to you, um, is what it looks like when we've realigned things that are realistic to what we spent last year, with the exception of the things that may have been unique, and, um, then have our annual plan moving forward rather than having to bench it throughout the year.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, twenty-one is our external audit, very simple. You know, the auditors come.
I'm sorry, I have to.
No, go ahead.
I want to go back.
Go back, you can go back.
Eh, can you give me some information on dues and memberships?
This can be access dues. This can be CSBA dues. It can be school services, it could be CASBO.
You don't know specifics of what it is.
Um, I believe that we've paid CSBA dues.
Do we know how this compares to previous years?
I'm in the process of doing that now.
Okay, I would like to see that.
It, but it's, it's like, I mean, my comparative of last year is like five hundred pages, so. Because I'm, I'm printing details so that I'm like, what the heck was that?
Yeah.
Um, and I'm going through that exercise and that's, that's really laborsome. I- in that, that, uh, this system only has fifteen, sixteen data and I understand that may have been some unique spending. And then the fourteen, fifteen year was probably maybe a more normal year to bench. That's in a different system, so then you're kind of doing paper comparison, which is not as fun.
We have budgets in fourteen, fifteen.
Right, right, right.
We had no budgets in fifteen, sixteen.
There were budgets, I just won't tell you that they were.
They weren't, uh, realistic budgets.
Right. Right.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see the comparison because I'm a little shocked by this.
Or this is part of that lengthy process of going back through and populating all of these fields in our, in our financial system, which is really item by item that I had described to you.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I mean Nancy has a lot of information, but then she, staff was not part of the development of the budget. And, eh, you know, I know last year had some anomalies. So comparing to fourteen, fifteen or different document to current document, so there's, it's, it's laborsome, but we're doing that exercise right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, on, so on twenty-one is our audit. Uh, we have an annual audit. They come out every year, it la- it late September, October for a few days. It will come to you, uh, the report will come to you in Septe- in, uh, December. Totally traditional, that, that part's pretty simple. On page twenty-two, general admin. This is something that probably needs to be recoded. It's in there all by itself. And this is something that, um, when you see a transfer like that, that's between funds. So that's something that's going between either us and cafeteria, us and CCP, or us and building. Those all need to kind of get evaluated too. Twenty-three, these are just other outgoing. These again are indirect costs that we collect from other funds and other categoricals. That's all it is. So we reduce our expenses by forty-six thousand by charging those restricted programs and other funds to keep their books. It's a state-defined percentage. Page twenty-four, uh, fiscal services. This is the business office. You will also see in here our property and liability insurances and other contracts that are held in here. This is all of our paycheck stock and envelopes and all of those things that we need in the business office, as well as the salaries. Page twenty-six, HR. You'll see in human resources, uh, down in the fifty-eight hundreds, legal fees, advertising, advertising obviously for recruitment. And then a lot of this in the other category, we are fingerprinting and the things that have to take place in HR. Not a very big budget. Twenty-seven hundred, I mean, page twenty-seven, seventy-five hundred, central support is going to be, um, like Mari, like those, those functions that are doing the, the, the ed data. Page twenty-eight is our IT department. One of the things that I'm trying to do, um, and this is something that, that, when you, when you think about your budget and the story you want to tell and you organize it logically, there are some things, excuse me, that you don't really want chopped into a dozen accounts by site. And all of the things that we talked about in the board meetings of past, these data systems, these measure systems, really need to be caught, kind of pulled back in into one central place where we can see all of the, all of the things related to our technology services, student and non-student, that we're utilizing. And, and right now, we have to pull them out of like a dozen places to kind of pull it together. And so we're trying to rope them back in to get a list of what these are district-wide. And then year over year, you're evaluating, do we do it, don't we do it? What's the value? It's expensive, is there another tool? I mean, you can have those conversations. Right now, they're not memorialized in a budget document anywhere and it's just going through actuals and there's like some over here, some over here, some over here, and it's trying to find them all and group them. So this, this budget should have everything related to what's happening on our servers. And then we can start evaluating the effectiveness of some of those things. On page twenty-nine, plant maintenance and operations. These are all of our custodial staff and all of our custodial budgets. On page thirty, um, it's our, um, maintenance workers. Same thing, our plant operations, but these are the maintenance staff, the maintenance crew. And then on page thirty.
Going back to, we spend more than that in custodial, have to.
Some of it is broken into this, operations, buildings, and grounds. They're kind of not, this is where we kind of like need to look, relook at our codes and get it consistent.
So custodial is not always put into, into plant, uh, maintenance operation?
No.
Okay.
They're kind of intermixed. I think the only thing that has been cleanly identified are the grounds on page thirty-two. And I'm not even sure that's totally clean. I need to look at like all of the, all of the folks paid out of the maintenance department and take a look at how they're coded. And make sure that we have them in categories that are sensical.
And just to clarify, this is not measure U staff.
Nope, this is all.
This is just our strict.
Yes, it is, it will be, not all of it. But a good portion of this will be restricted routine maintenance. Because I think it, this is the kind of thing that we transfer in at the end of the year into RMA. So the, all the way through page thirty-three are going to be our maintenance grounds and operations folks. Um, on page thirty-four, we have just a little bit identified for security. I couldn't quite tell you exactly what that pays for. On page thirty-five, we do have staff at our schools for campus, yes, go back.
Can I go back, I'm sorry?
Go back, sure.
On page thirty-three.
Yes.
Um, under plant operations grounds, we have eighty-one thousand in books and supplies. What is that?
So that's all of the materials, those are the, that's all the supplies.
Oh, it just, uh, the, the books threw me off.
Yeah.
I'm like, one book, the rest is supplies.
We buy books.
Wow! Like Lance gave me books? Thank you.
I've changed most of the descriptions to say materials and supplies.
Okay, yeah.
Because a long time ago, I mean, this is a long time ago and a land far away, the object code had to determine classroom or non-classroom. And a lot of these codes were pulled in from the county and they were kind of archaic. So, they didn't, like, we don't need a different account for materials and supplies because the function tells you what it's doing. You know, so, um, I missed the, this is the, the, the one-digit object summary, I think I, I think I caught the other ones to, oh no, they just, the one-digit says, but if you look at like the previous page on thirty-two, it does say material supplies, I just missed one.
And that's the one I found.
When it gets to a forty-one, twenty, or forty-five, ten, or something like that, and, and it's not just a four thousand series, then it'll narrow it in.
So again, on page thirty-five, this is our, our, uh, campus safety staff, at, mostly at the high school. Um, on thirty-six, this is, um, this is facilities acquisition and construction, it's, the function is facilities. This is the general fund piece that's used to do probably, um, you may rent something at graduation, I mean, there's a, so this is not necessarily having to do with measure U or any building, it's a criteria that has to do with what you're spending. Um, thirty-seven, we have some debt service, um, these are our bus leases. And on page thirty-eight, these are our transfers out to other funds. And you will see in the description, it tells you where it's going. I, I will say that with our new director of food service, that I would be shocked if we reached that kind of contribution. Um, I think she's doing a fantastic job with the program.
That was the goal.
Yes, yes. And so we, she and I have had a lot of conversations too about what that is and how we can start mitigating that a little bit. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that changing.
Glad it's working.
So this, this section is really showing you by major function where our money goes. And it's a good way to compartmentalize it because you can see that the majority of the money is going to instruction and supporting kids. And that, the other parts, um, definitely there's work to do within here, but you can kinda get the main idea of where we're spending our money. Okay, so the next section is gonna be, huh?
Really, really good information data there, thank you.
The next section in six is gonna be a different set. It's gonna be my, by fund again, we're still fund, it's all unrestricted. This time we're gonna go by unit code, now we're using unit code kind of like a program, sort of. And you can see this is a much smaller report, because there's not very many things we're using unit code to identify, but the things that are in here are not identified anywhere other, in any other code group, so I wanted you to see this too. So you'll see that we have, eh, uh, on page one through three, there's no unit code identified at all. So these are basically all, um, not being tracked in any specific program. They may be in a function, they may be using a resource code, but that's not, not significant. And then starting on page fourteen, you see how we've started to identify different parts within the general fund. We have core summer school at the high school on page four. On page five, we have our site formula funding. And this is the code that's used for the sites when they're using their money. Now this one I wanna talk about just a little bit. Because there's a lot of, um, I've had to do a lot of digging in this area to figure out how this money got here, what these budget numbers mean, where they came from. This budget includes both targeted monies and non-targeted monies, unrestricted monies. And the way it has been calculated in the past and in cur- in, in, including in the sixteen, seventeen budget, is using a formula based on the old EIA money, the old school improvement block grant formula, and a lottery amount that probably hasn't changed in nine or ten years. So, and it's compartmentalized in a couple of account groups. So the sites don't, I mean, it's all, it's like, we have to give spreadsheets to kind of total this stuff up. The goal is to give the schools one single source of funds that they can rely on consistently and they understand the formula. So, right now, we're looking at all of the money the sites have available, unrestricted and restricted, and we're not changing the restricted side at this, you know, that's, that's restricted, like the Title I, et cetera. But on the unrestricted side, we're looking at how it was allocated, how they are spending it, whether it's adequate. And you will probably come back in December and all, you'll, you'll see some shifts here. Because what's happened over time is the money in these buckets are not even close to what elementary schools need to even pay for copiers. Yet the high school and middle school, and they're not gonna like me saying this, are much in excess of what they need. So it wasn't really aligned with the needs of, of the levels of grades. So there's gonna be probably some, taking a look at this and rebenching it, and I, I intend fully to work with the school principals and do this.
So are, are you, I mean, have you dug into it at all?
I have.
So is it, is it, are we using more clicks at the high school than we would at the, is that, is that where we're going over budget?
Not at the high school and middle school.
No.
But I will tell you that copier clicks never even came into how much was allocated. So as we've, you know, I mean, as, especially with Common Core, I mean, there's a lot more paper that is copied, and there's a lot more materials, especially until textbook adoptions, that you had to reproduce, that's never been considered in these budget amounts. They've kind of been stale. So, you know, those things we need to evaluate, you know, so those, there are some things in a school budget that are just fixed, you have to pay for. And those need to be either in the formula and accounted for, or outside the formula and live somewhere else. So that when the schools have how much they have, they have that much. Um, and, uh, you, you know, I'm looking at a lot of different things, um, you know, we do a lot of blanket purchasing here, and then in this new system, if you do a blanket purchase order for like three thousand dollars, it pulls it out of your balance. Not available anymore, that's confusing. Uh, there's a lot of ways we can maximize the, uh, by economies of scale, by internet purchasing, how we're spending our money. We haven't done that yet, and something that I want to move towards.
So we haven't started internet purchasing, 'cause I know we, we, we weren't, we basically didn't have that capability up until about a year ago.
We, we have internet purchaseability, it's limited, it's in the form of, um, send me your shopping cart on Amazon and we'll order it for you. And that's not efficient either. There's, you, you know, there's a lot of different things we can explore, um, to give schools the ability to do what they need to do without having to go through a lot of hoops, especially, um, when it comes to purchasing online. That's something I think is more, we're gonna do, I'm gonna hope to bring some of that to you in the spring. There's a lot, lot to chew here, um, and a lot to, to kind of, for me to absorb and to be really clear on. And that's something I wanna work on so that we can implement new year. Um, but there's a lot of different opportunities there, um, including being able to have next-day delivery of paper to the schools, without having it to go somewhere to sit for a week and then have it to go, you know, so those are the conversations that we're trying to have to build real economies, so that the schools get what they need right away, we're not bogging things down, they understand how their money is being held aside. Um, I'm gonna continue, uh, I think that some of the discovery for me in the past couple of weeks is with the new system, nobody got training.
So, just going back to the paper thing, so right now, we're buying bulk paper, going to the warehouse, and then are we having our staff deliver it to sites?
Not anymore.
Okay, but we were doing that?
We had, uh, I, I stopped purchasing any paper because we have so much paper in our warehouse that it'll take us probably this year to use it. And we know that with, with new tech, with these new copiers, they're much more sensitive to paper being warped or damp. And we do not have an environmentally controlled warehouse. So the longer the paper sits there, it's gonna be problematic for our machines. So, why, why waste our warehouse? We can order it next day and deliver.
That's the labor cost, I mean, we could get an account with Staples or-
We have an account, so that we have things in place, they've just never been-
But they can dele- I mean, then we're not spending the extra labor-
Right.
-to deliver it.
Right, and then there's no delay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, there's no delay.
Not old paper.
We would, we would have blanket orders for like, just a, a fixed order form that looked like it was on a, a manual typewriter actually, of reams of colored paper that got ordered year over year too. And I said, no. If the, if the schools need pink, they can order a couple reams of pink paper. Um, or if they need a case of yellow, they can get a case of yellow, we're not gonna house this stuff anymore. So, as, as things come up, those are the kinds of things that we're looking at to say, wait a minute, that doesn't make a lot of sense. I also have had, um, you know, like the discovery about the sites not, not having been trained, including office managers, we're doing online requisitioning. It should not be hard, and it should not take a lot of time, but it is because they don't know what to do. So it's, okay, we all need to kinda step back a wa- a little bit, kinda start over and get people really well-trained and make sure that we're listening to the frustrations of where we're s- not being successful, and then starting to break that through, um, into good practices. And, you know, I have a lot of new staff too. Um, Nancy's been here for a long time, but the other positions are fairly new. So it's an op- it's an opportunity to, to get their perspective and to also make sure that, um, they work really closely with the schools and making sure that they understand what they need, they're filling their needs. I mean, we need to become more service-based and, not that we're not, but I mean, we really need to hear the, the needs of what is happening, um, to be able to serve our schools, and I think, um, with this pot of money, there has been, um, some confusion about what was, what was, what was communicated early in April, what it turned into, what we spent it on, how it's coded, and that just needs to get unpacked a little bit.
So do our principals right now understand what their budgets are for this year?
Pretty much no. Um, I've sat down with them all-
So we're in October, so tell me how that's gonna work, 'cause I can't imagine how that must feel to be into October, school started in August, and I don't know what my budget is.
So, they have budget documents, but they're not documents they've ever had before. The spreadsheets that have been done in the past did not get done this year to give them at adoption. Part of the exercise of going through the LCAP and identifying the supplemental and concentration grant services, we were calling that category to the sites a discretionary pot for them to spend, but it really isn't. It's a criteria of a cost that meets the need of that targeted pupil. So we have to, I mean, so, they think they have all this money in a budget that was just placeholder, it was a placeholder. It wasn't spendable. So we-
It wasn't actually their money.
Uh, right, but now we have a dilemma where we have these targeted costs that we had to increase by over a million dollars for the LCAP, and the schools think they have that to spend also. They're not the same dollars. So, that's where I'm saying I'm, I'm going back, I'm looking at all of the money that was in, it's all in this O six X, and I'm looking at what is in this that we've already spent that was in the LCAP that they were gonna spend anyway, out of that money. And then what's left? And of what's left, um, is it adequate? And then how do we rebench to get their budgets, what they need to go, to, to operate the rest of the year? And in the meantime, come up with a single formula that gets them a better idea year over year, a per pu- per pupil amount, simple amount that says year over year, this is how much I have. And then they clearly know how much they have, they have online access to see their spending, their balances, their detail. Um, that's, that's the goal. Right now, it's, it's just the land of discovery.
And we've been communicating that to, to our principals?
We've met, we've met, uh, we had a meeting last week, um, that went into this a little bit. Um, and I, it was, again, another opportunity for me to get some context of prior year, um, and how it's happened in the past, and then-
I, I'm gonna say, I don't want you to look at prior year, I want you to look at-
Uh, no, in the past, yes, yes, okay, I don't mean, prior years.
Yes.
Excluding, excluding last year.
Yeah, I'm getting a lot of, I, I get last year now. Um, assumption, all my assumptions were like completely taken off the table and I just listened.
Yeah, I just don't want that to be the norm.
It's not the norm.
I think we need to look at what has been the norm, so, that's important.
And that's where I'm working with Nancy, 'cause she has been the one to get those year over year over year. But I think that the important thing that we need to do moving forward, and we're gonna start that this week, is get really good training and escape. They have their logins, they don't know how to do them, they don't know how to use them, they don't know what to look at. And the budgets are there. I've also, um, in the, and they, we haven't stopped them from spending at all. So it's, so whether or not they're clear on what their amounts are, they're still operating.
Well, I think, I, I, well, one of my concerns is that, is that, um, there was discussion, and I'm, I, I, I'm afraid that we, that a lot of the site money was rolled into, into, um, basically a, a funding mechanism to, to fund some of these new positions that we created. And, um, and it was, it was not, it, uh, was not really done with board blessing. Um, and I'm, I'm concerned, eh, that, that's why we really need to dig into some of these, some, like, I think Terri's and Michelle both asked for direction, or at least, um, uh, I guess a chart showing what each position in the district is funded by, and, and we've got that back here, okay?
Yes, I will tell you that, um, the formulas have not changed, but in the, um, lottery funding bucket, there was a reduction of thirty thousand dollars, site, oops, site-wide, to pay for whatever, I don't know what it paid for. There's no direct correlation to say it paid for that. But there was a reduction of like thirty thousand dollars across the schools from their site money. Um, I'm aware of that, and what it did is it gave, uh, no consideration to the fixed costs that those schools have, and-
Right.
It, it dropped their budgets below adequate to pay for simple copier clicks.
Yeah, I think, I think it was a fifteen percent cut across schools, but I can't remember what it was allocated for, yeah.
Probably about right, but it turned out to be about thirty thousand, yeah. And, you know, so-
Each site or total?
Total.
Oh, total, that was it?
The rest, so I went over with, and that's something I reviewed with Nancy this week, because after the meeting last week, I'm like, okay, back up. And Nancy and I went over the funding formulas that have been in place for many years, and the amounts have not changed. Uh, what did change is this reduction, right off the top.
And I think Michelle might be right, I think that might have been an idea of a fifteen percent reduction across departments, across school, e- everything, school-wide, whether it worked or not, you know, um.
I'm wondering if, if, if Barnaby or Jamie recalls if that was the case. Do you want, you wanna come up and address that?
Is this about the lottery money?
Well, it's about, it's about site funds and, and if the budget was, if, if, if the, if we said, if, if a goal was set of fifteen percent reduction in-
You discussed that at the Board Budget Study Session in the spring, but to my recollection, there was no action taken on that.
Yeah, I don't think we took action on this.
It was a, it was a possible suggestion and a big, thick packet of suggestions, but there was no action on that.
We're ju- trying to figure out where that thirty thousand dollar reduction across school sites might have come from.
I look forward to you finding it.
So that, that hasn't hit your budget that you don't know?
Oh, yes, the budget has been significantly-
They've been reduced by that fif- Yes.
I don't know what action prompted the reduction, but the reduction, just to give an example, at Catalina, went from twenty-seven thousand to thirteen thousand. Copy costs are twenty-one thousand, so we are short eight thousand just, just in copy costs.
So I can explain some of that also on top of the reduction, um, after like talking about what happens year over year. So there's also a practice where a school goes over of reducing that negative in the next-year budget. But there's never been consideration that the budgets are not really built adequately. Right, so that, that, in, in Catalina- Right? So that, that, in, in Cannolino's situation, that's exactly what they did. They went over last year, but it was not that Cannolino went over.
They, they were underfunded to begin with.
Yes. And then it gets deducted from their next year and then if there's carryover, they get, I mean, there's a, it's a flawed process. And that's the part that I'm like.
Especially for, for a district as small as ours.
It is, and then you can't reduce a budget beyond what they minimally can even operate with.
Have to operate, right.
That, that's non, that just doesn't work. It's not, doesn't make any sense. It's not practical, it's not sensible, so.
We have to be realistic, so.
Exactly.
Maybe you have to look at whether or not extra copies are being done that shouldn't be. That's, that's a question, but probably not. I'm just, I mean, that is a question to be answered.
Managed print solutions too.
At the end of the day, you have to make your copies.
I, I don't think the case is that they're making more than they should. I think the case is that the budgets are just inadequate. And that's the exercise that I'm doing right now, evaluating what, what they need, looking at these practices. And making sure that these budgets get aligned and to, to reality. And to an adequate level that the sites need and then they understand that what that is. So that's a process that's going to, that I'm, I've been working on, but I don't have it for today. Um, and I'm, I'm hoping to have that even before December, but.
It's really a long time. I, I understand that you're digging into it and it's hard, but that's really a long time for principals to operate without any real idea of a budget.
Right. They have documents, but again, the numbers are not adequate. I mean, so they have a document, it's just not a good one.
Yeah.
I just want to give some perspective on the numbers for the sites. Especially the smaller schools, the small sites that I oversee is a fifteen, it was mentioned the fifteen percent reduction. That has a significant impact at every site, but a, a small site that has a budget of, you know, a couple thousand dollars.
It's huge.
Again, it's, it's inadequate to begin with, but that fifteen percent then cuts it down even more, so. Or it even seems like more than that. So we're, we're not dealing with lots and lots of money, so fifteen percent is just a, you know, a little bit off the top, so it's, uh, there, we're not, we're dealing with smaller budgets per site, so. So especially at the smaller sites.
And sometimes I, I know, um, I, I don't know specifically by school site, but I know each year there's that carryover. That's always been allocated in our budget, principal site funds that are carried over. Do, have they maintained those site funds at least? Do they know what that is and does, has it carried over into the next year? Or have we just absorbed that into our budget?
No, that principal reserve includes their site carryover. But I will say again, that for especially the elementary schools, there's not been carryover because the budgets showed a negative. And that's, that, that, that's perpetuating like a problem that has to get fixed. And where we saw in some of the function budgets, some surplus.
So it's the middle school and the high school that have extra funds and the elementaries do not? Is that, I, I, I mean, I'm curious, Jamie, are you?
I, I don't have a principal's reserve as far as I know, correct?
No, she does not have any carryover in a principal's reserve.
I don't think any of the elementary schools, I, 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 we're kind of in this process of trying to understand what is principal's reserve. Because our former understanding was not the current understanding.
Okay, but what, I think what Maureen has said is that we've underfunded the elementary sites and perhaps overfunded the secondary.
Yes, and I, and again, you can see in some of the other function categories, there's some of that money that's going to have to probably come down over here. So you see something that may be over-allocated. It's not necessarily, we can sweep it. There needs to be some realignment. And I do think that, you know, historically, the middle and high school do have carryover. Um, that's the only carryover that's on our reserves today, uh, when we closed our books, because both elementary schools were negative. Because they weren't adequately, adequately budgetly, budgeted. And so when I, so my, my process is to go back last year, basically. And I'm not, I'm gonna, there's, there's eradicate the negative, give them a clean allocation. Make sure that the things that are not being, coming, not coming out of their budget, shouldn't be any, any of their site costs, to get them good balances. And I, I'm not, I'm not expecting them to wait, obviously, till first interim. That's my first priority, is to get them those budgets. Um, and I've already started doing that and making sure that they get rebenched and that we identify the costs that should be in their budget. Um, and, you know, in the meantime, I'm not stopping anything from going through. And, um, the next exercise is really getting them, um, trained and knowledgeable of how to use the system to look their stuff up. So they have on-time, real-time balances and they can look at the transactions to say, wait a minute, I don't know what that is. Who did that one?
So I can see going forward, this is a good thing. And, and I just want to say right off the top that, um, you know, I, I, I was pretty close with Cindy and one of the things she told me that she really was happy about is your experience with, with Escape and, and that you were going to be, be able to, you know, really bring us into the next, I guess, generation or whatever you want to call it. So she had high praise for you for that. So anything I say, I don't want you to take it as a negative. You know, it's just we're all trying to figure out moving forward, it, it's different and you're trying to grapple with it and get it all now into the, into the new format. But Jamie, before you sit down, I'm sorry.
It was nice of Gerardo to give up half his budget, though, to the elementary.
We told him he stepped out at the absolute wrong time.
I just wanted to ask, though, because I, I understand how hard, difficult it must be. And this is true for all of the principals, but I'm going to ask you specifically, um, going forward without a budget.
Yes.
Yet Maureen is telling me that she's not, she's not turning things down. So where are your hands tied right now in things that you might be needing to do that you, you don't feel like you can do or, I, I, I need to understand that.
Okay. Uh, well, we can't bring a, a budget to our school site councils, so that's one thing. Or for our single plan for student achievement.
Sure.
Uh, so we are, I, I, for my part, we're just very conservatively figuring out what is the absolute need. Not increasing staff positions or we're just trying to run as, as efficiently as we can on what we have right now. But we do still have to run a school.
Right.
With six hundred kids in it, so.
We, could we look at what you spent last year and just say that's your preliminary budget?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Gerardo talk, too.
And then, and then bring, I mean, it seems like that's a fair thing.
Yeah, no, this is, they'll probably have something next week.
Yeah, and then that's, they can bring that to their, to their site council.
I can see site councils are an issue. You, you need to move forward with that.
This is an urgent issue.
Site, the school site plans.
Yeah, and I think, uh, I think all the administrators at one point or another, um, start setting aside funds for future purchases. So for example, I'm having to get ready here to replace all of my computers in every classroom and every computer lab. The last time we replaced them was almost seven years ago. So, um, I'm still running Windows two thousand, uh, Office two thousand. So, um, I cannot prepare my students to be competitive in the twenty-first century uh, when I'm twelve years behind the Office suite. I can't ask my teachers to take students to the computer lab when out of the thirty-six, I have five of them that are broken. So, uh, that is money that we had set aside previously. That's one of the reasons, if you base it on what we spent last year, it will be, we will just spend what we had last year, but we, whatever was left over was being saved.
You don't want to lose your carryovers, is what you're saying. You've, you've been stockpiling that for purpose.
Purpose for it.
Yeah.
As we require, uh, more, uh, technology in the classroom, the need for those Chromebooks, carts are, are very important. Uh, the need for those tablets, the need for, uh, big television sets, replacement of the document cameras. Uh, those are things that we have, uh, kept on our budgets because, uh, they're constantly being, have to be replaced.
And I'm sure you're taking that into account, too, Maureen, but.
Yeah, and, and I.
Good comments.
They're very good comments and those are the, those are the things that I'm meeting with the principals on and, you know. We shouldn't have carryover for the sake of like hoarding. We should have carryover for planning.
Right.
And that's, which is what he's talking about. And so it's, and it's important that I understand the plan so that I can help make sure that we are allocating that and keeping that safe.
Yes.
Um, so that's definitely the conversations that we're having moving forward. But getting the sites a budget is really posthaste and they're having training on Friday, this Friday. And by next week, I hope to have something clean that they can be looking at.
Good. I agree with your comment, uh, about not having carryover for hoarding, but having carryover for planning. Having said that, I really think it's important, um, when principals have a budget and I'm going to, I mean, I can just say with what Gerardo just mentioned, obviously, he did have a plan. I really don't like making people feel like they have to spend every dollar or lose it.
No.
That's, that's a problem to me because that's when you actually spend for no reason.
Exactly, and the, the exact reason that Gerardo said, you know, we do have to make sure, and this is not just at, at the high school. We have to have technology replacement set-asides, because this is, this is affecting everybody.
And it'll be ongoing.
It'll be ongoing and, um, and then there's some options there, too. Erin and I swam around a few options where you, um, get into district-wide leasing. And you pay a fixed amount and they refresh you every three years with new equipment. I mean, and I'm, those are just the ideas that we need to start looking at for the realities of what happens in technology. After three years, it's pretty much obsolete anymore.
Yeah.
May I jump in as well? Uh, as you know, we postponed the delivery of single-site plans. This is the second year of the single-site plan. Uh, but I, I couldn't imagine myself going back to site council with a non-budget and saying, well, this is where we stand, folks. So until we have a good handle on this, uh, I, I don't know when to reschedule it. We'll wait until we have a good handle on this and then we can go back to our, our site councils.
Okay. Well, I, I personally, I think the rest of the board probably, we're, we're going to trust that the communication is going to be open and, you know, you're going to move forward in a relatively.
Yeah.
As quick as possible.
They've all been very forthcoming and making sure I know.
Good.
Um, past practice.
Sounds like you've heard that a few times.
And, and Jamie's been really good at bringing in context, uh, same with Gerardo.
Okay.
Um, onto what, what they typically would see and what, what, what has happened over the last couple of years. Um, so now I've just got to like, you know, absorb it and I've got to fix it. So that's the, we're, we're in triage right now.
Well, you have a big job and.
It, it'll be fine.
I want to say again, I, I, I was told that you were going to bring us into the next.
Nope, pressure.
With Escape. And, you know, I'm just begi- I'm just getting a, a little bit of it and they're going to learn it really well as, as you guys move forward.
So that's why I wanted to ta- spend a little bit of time on this one, because I know this is one that's been swinging around and has a lot of, um, a lot more attention that needs to be paid more urgently. So I'll move on to the next few pages right now. Um, on page seven, again, this is another category for athletics. This is not the same function code. This is a separate identification of the fees that are collected for transportation. Um, on pa- same page seven, tab six. Page seven of thirteen on tab six. We're just going to go, continue to go through the fund and unit reports. On page eight, you have the department chair stipends. The grade level chair stipends. So you see how much we're paying for those. And this is where you start seeing the title of stipends and this is what they are. On page nine, we have a few bilingual stipends that we pay out. And so you kind of see how the unit's being used different than the function. Retiree benefits, this is part of OPEB, so this is just a, an audit. There's some offsets to these in the revenue part. On page eleven, um, we get safety credits from our property and liability, our workers' comp and property and liability insurance. And that's what these are.
Which tab are you on now?
We are still on six. We are on page eleven of thirteen.
At eleven, yes. I wasn't sure if you'd.
Yes. It's not much. The retirees', uh, health insurance, this is our OPEB. So we're required under GASB to book our, um, retiree benefit liability annually.
So if you've worked thirty years, you get, you get fully paid health insurance.
Until age sixty-five.
Okay, so then on page twelve. Um, now this is an interesting one. This is part of a staff, and I could probably tell you who. Um, that's being paid out of MAH. This is going to change, because we're not, yeah. That's of old. Uh, it, but this is all general unrestricted anyways, but it's just a category that's there. And then on the last page thirteen of thirteen, you'll see some expenses for the Ballard property. Both revenue in, in the, um, the rent that we receive and then the expenses for the property. So you can see how the function shows you something different than the unit shows you. And they don't necessarily show you the same thing, but they might show you some of the same thing. And then the, the last report in this packet on page seven is showing you the unit codes by school. So I don't know that we want to necessarily go through here. Um, on tab seven.
I'm sorry, can we, can we go back to the Ballard property?
Yeah.
Thirteen of thirteen. Am I understanding that that's a hundred and forty-two thousand in revenues and then just under fifty-nine thousand in expenditures?
Yes.
So the net is eighty-three?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Doesn't, I, I'm going to think about that a little bit.
Uh, and I, I honestly can't do a lot of commenting. I haven't dived in there yet.
Yeah.
I will, because I looked at that, too, and went, hmm. That was one of those hmm.
I think we had to put a new roof on one of them last year.
Well, but I'm just looking at the net.
Yeah.
How much rent we, we receive versus the output?
Yeah, yeah. It could, it could be. I just need to think about it a little bit. So go ahead.
So then on the, the last tab, tab seven, it has our unit codes and it's just sectioned by school.
Tab nine?
Uh, no, tab seven.
Oh, seven.
One of thirty-nine. So this is just going by school. It's the same thing you saw in the unit code reports that we just saw, but it'll break it out by school. Like who has department-level chairs, who has this, who has that. And I, I don't know that we want to go through these, but this is mainly for your review. You can kind of look, look through it at your own leisure. Good reading. And then for your sake, at the board level, you have two additional tabs, eight and nine. The first one shows you our staffing by alphabet and all of the accounts that each person is charged to.
So eight is not current, because we have people.
This is, remember, the adopted budget. It has not, it will be refreshed at first interim.
Okay.
So this is as of the budget you've already approved, right? So it won't look like it's current.
Yeah, because like John Merritt's still on there.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. And then the, the tab nine, so this is alphabetical, the first one. Tab nine is by account. So this is by school and then resource. So it'll tell you all the staff at the school unrestricted, if they're in Title I, if they're in blah, blah, blah. And I won't, won't necessarily go through those because you can see those at your own leisure. But it does break down what is in the budget. This will get refreshed when we re-establish a budget for first interim. You'll get these updated.
That's good information.
So I'm going to talk a little bit now about what to expect for first interim, the things that are going to happen next. I have to go through this entire document and designate those things that we put in the LCAP that identify that full two-point-eight million dollars with a budget code. That's going to be a big project. Um, we're going to update position control based on the staffing we have today. That'll update your sheets. Assuming the ratification of the TA, uh, with cause, the budgets will be updated to reflect that agreement. Budgets will be aligned by program and I'll say by site to reflect actual annual obligations, and that's the rebenching I talked about. That's a exercise. And then the last bullet is continued implementation and training in the financial system escape, including budget monitoring and control features. So there's a lot, this is a very powerful intuitive system. And we've only touched like a mini microchasm of what it can do for us. And, um, when you have a very intuitive system, you have to set, you have to set your processes up to be a little bit intuitive also. So we're going to continue to work through that process. To say, where, where, where do we need to put efficiencies? How can we streamline? How can we simplify? Some days of old, you may have like coded utilities to dozens of accounts identifying everything you don't need to today. Let's make it one and collapse things and it, it creates, um, it reduces redundancy, it reduces staff labor time. Um, it creates ease of reporting and those are all the goals. So that when we come up with these reports in future, we don't have to run them like three different groups of ways to make sure we show everything. Um, we can get a simple report. And then I had to include my little emoji at the end, because that's probably how we're all looking right now. So, yep, it's a lot of information. It's good information.
It was really good.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is really helpful.
Very helpful report.
Good.
Very helpful report.
And I'd like to comment that all these changes will be made, uh, the, the, the highlighted ones that, uh, that Maureen has described, by the time the first interim report comes to you early in December. So she has limited time to get that done.
We'll get there.
She's a busy lady.
We'll be there, we'll get there, and, and again, um, don't hesitate to ask questions or get clarification and, and I'm just doing the, the search and seizure and the digging right now. Um, I'm trying to attach as we do revisions, um, description and budget items so that in future, we know what that amount was meant to be pay, paying for. Um, because that's helpful, um, in perpetuity, it's helpful.
Yeah, I, I don't have public comment, but-
Oh, we don't, I thought it's, no?
Okay.
Okay, I think we're good.
Okay.
So we'll be back here in an hour.
All right.
Roughly.
Do we, are we going to close or?
No, our close is after, I think.